Don't try to play the mime again like last month.
Yeah, we don't want to do that. Have you opened us up Heather?
I have, we are live. I'm just trying to find Byron, but I don't see him in the attendees. Just give me a second.
There he is, he just popped in. I think we got you now Jeff.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Alright, sorry about that. I had to get new earphones after the last one, they broke, so been trying to deal with fun issues.
Byron, you can hear us, right? Byron, you can hear us? Come on, you mime.
Yes indeed, I can hear you Mr. Chairman, thank you.
He's trying, you need the face paint Byron, if you're gonna do the mime trick?
You know, I just didn't have time. I drove, I can get my beret, I can certainly get my beret out of the closet.
Alright, let's uh, let's call this meeting to order. This is the uh, May nineteenth, my goodness, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Um, I need to read a long dissertation into the record, so bear with me. As Chair of the Concord New Hampshire Planning Board, due to the COVID nineteen coronavirus crisis in accordance with Governor Suninen's Emergency Order Number Twelve pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash zero four, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting through clicking on the following website address. Uh, that's zoom.us forward slash J forward slash seven five four zero seven six six two nine or by dialing the following phone number, nine two nine two zero eight nine oh six six and entering the password seven five four zero seven six six two nine. For those calling in and want to participate, provide live testimony dot star nine to alert the host that you'd like to speak when the host and the host will unmute you uh, during the public portion hearing of our meeting. B, provided the public a notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public on how to access the meeting using Zoom and instructions are provided on the City of Concord's website at wwwconcordnh.gov forward slash two seven three forward slash planning board. Planning dashboard. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there's problem with access. If anyone has a problem, please call two two five eight five one five or send an email to planning@concordnh.gov. And D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public's unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled uh, at that time. Please note that all votes are to be taken during this meeting shall be done so by roll call vote. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Uh, with that, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll? Heather?
I forgot I would need it. Chairman Woodburn?
Here and I am alone in the room.
David Fox?
I'm here and I'm alone in the room.
Uh, Member Smith Meyer?
Here and I'm alone.
Member Rosenberg? Member Rosenberg?
Can you hear me Theresa?
Yeah, I'm hearing you. We can see that you unmuted, but we're not, there we go, we can see you. Coming through, but it's garbled, but we got that you're, that you're here. Um, Counselor Champlin?
I'm present and I am at room in my house alone.
Uh, Member Regan?
Here and alone.
Member Hicks?
Here by myself.
And Member Santa Cruz?
Here and alone.
A bunch of lonely people here on a beautiful Wednesday night.
Mister Chairman, I just have a quick question. The number you ran off for call-in?
Yep, that's a Zoom, that's a Zoom number, that's a nine oh eight number or?
Yeah, you said nine two nine and then the number on the agenda is two zero five six zero nine nine, which is different than I think the number you ran off. I just wanna, read off, I mean, I just wanna make sure we're providing the correct info.
Let's just make sure nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine is the number that's on the agenda and the number that I've been reading for a year is uh, nine two nine two zero eight six zero nine nine.
So the five and the eight are wrong, yeah.
So if you're calling in, call in one of those numbers, two zero eight six, or nine two nine two zero eight six zero nine nine.
I'll look into that. I'm not sure, to be honest, I assume one of the agendas, the correct one, but I can say for sure, so I'll look into it.
Theoretically, I could call from a cellphone and find out.
Thank you for pointing that out, so let's uh, let's move on to our first item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the April to uh, April twenty-first meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second. Motion was made by Counselor Champlin, seconded by David Fox. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodburn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Smith Meyer?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, so those uh, minutes will be made part of the record. It moves us on to our agenda overview. I don't have anything pulled off of the agenda Heather, is that correct? Everything will be on the agenda will be heard tonight? So it moves us to item five, right out of the gate, determination of completeness. Uh, this is for Josiah Bartlett. Uh, if we could read that into the record?
Yes, Marianne. Uh, behalf of K R J Finance LLC, requesting your subdivision approval for a nine lock cluster subdivision at four six two Josiah Bartlett Road in the medium density residential district. Staff does recommend that the application be determined complete, uh, not a development of regional impact and that the public hearing be set for June sixteenth.
Okay, so if anyone's here looking for information regarding this application, uh, this is just a determination completeness component. Uh, we'll find the application complete, set the public hearing for June sixth. Would someone like to make a motion to uh, find the application complete, not a development of regional impact and set the public hearing for June sixteenth? I'll make that motion. Someone like to second it?
Second.
Seconded by Suzanne. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodburn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Smith Meyer?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg? Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, and we have uh, number six on our agenda is design review applications by consent. Uh, we will uh, read the two items into the agenda. If anyone in the audience has a uh, objection to either of these or would like to speak to either of these applications, uh, applications reviewed by consent means we'll take them as one last sum and approve both of them, uh, or not approve both of them uh, in one fell swoop. So if you have a question, please make yourself known to the host. Uh, if we could read those two into the record Heather, six A and six B.
Neil Craft Signs, on behalf of Banger Savings Bank, request ADR approval for the installation of a new externally illuminated projecting sign at eighty-two North Main Street in the Central Business Performance District. And six B is Paquette Signs, on behalf of AmeriPrize Financial, requesting ADR approval for the replacement of a non-illuminated freestanding sign at two ten North Third Street in the urban transition district.
Okay, does any member of the board wish to pull either of those items off of the consent agenda? Make yourself known. Any member of the audience wish to uh, pull any of these items? If you could raise your hand or make yourself known to the host? Nope? So uh, would someone like to make a motion to approve items six A and six B as submitted with architectural design review comments?
So moved.
Second.
Take that um, motion from Suzanne and a second by John Regan to get on the agenda for tonight, right John? Right in the minute. Um, so we will, uh, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodburn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Smith Meyer?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
And Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, that moves us on to item seven in our uh, agenda, our public hearings, section design review applications. Uh, let's move right into seven A Heather, could we read that into the record?
Seven A is A and M signs, on behalf of Rupert Dance LLC, requesting ADR approval for the relocation and replacement of an internally illuminated freestanding sign at one oh five Manchester Street in the Highway Commercial District and that will stand, send a reminder update on this application.
Uh, sure, so the applicant had come back to ADR uh, earlier this month. Um, following uh, the recommendation to be remanded back to ADR, um, ADR basically reiterated their comments from the month prior um, with the recommendation that the uh, large white sign on the top um, be made opaque so that at night only the letters glow and the background does not. Um, currently the, these are non-conforming based on height, but that is grandfathered in as these were uh, uh, installed prior to the current zoning ordinance. Uh, ADR recommended that they be lowered into compliance. Um, and they would also like to see, uh, they felt that the signs were redundant, kind of saying the same things. Um, and to reduce uh, the redundancy uh, with pools and hot tubs. Um, one of the concerns was that because it is redundant, it looks like there are two businesses, one that sells and then one that services hot tubs and pools.
Okay, is the applicant here?
He intended to be here, um, yeah, he raised his hand, so I'm going to allow him to speak. Um, Jeff? Jeff, are you there? You're muted if you are there.
Yeah, here I am, here.
Okay, great.
Um, I did some research with my sign company on the request that you guys had, had asked. And we're totaling up around fifteen thousand dollars right now to do the things that you guys asked. I have to get a welder involved to move the sign down. Um, they would have to strip out all the signs I just had made and change everything to the, what you had called the opaque design. They sent me some pictures, um, of what it would look like and a, and a, uh, an estimate, um, which is not including getting two cranes on site and a welder to cut the signs uh, off of the current signboards. Um, you know, we looked into all this. I, I, I think the, the, the cost is excessive uh, for what you're looking for. I, I don't agree with your assessments that, you know, the sign is, is redundant. I'm just letting people know what I do and what I have. I mean, I, I, you know, the signs that are there are no different than the signs that were up there, except they're brand new. Now, in order to do what you guys are doing, that means I've gotta take all the writing off the reader board and just have a blank reader board. And you said, well, I can put that sales service and hot tubs and, and service on that in the reader board. Well, that doesn't change anything. It just changes in black letters, which will leave my reader board that I'm not able to use to advertise specials or different things that are going on in my business. Um, you know, and I've told you guys this before, I don't know if anybody drives up and down Manchester Street. I mean, the signs over there are horrible. They're all over the place, they're different colors, some look like they're handwritten. Um, I have brand new signs, I think they look really good. The design with my logos in the fonts that I use, um, you know, I, I just really, I, I really feel that, you know, it, it just looks good and it shouldn't be an issue with what you guys are doing. I mean, the height of the sign is grandfathered in. If I move that down, I'm gonna have to have branches on the trees cut. So there, there's a lot in motion for this to happen.
So what, what has happened since last month? I mean, we, we kinda sent you back last month, um, permitting wise, I believe Sam, if you can give us a any updates for what was done or what did change?
I, I haven't changed anything.
Sam?
You're muted Sam, if you're connected. He's probably?
Uh, no, my Zoom just crashed.
Oh, whoops.
So I missed the end of that.
What did mine?
Oh yeah? I'm looking for updates on what was done on the actions we took last month, uh, regarding this application and then uh, uh, where we stand as far as the, as far as compliance goes. I, I get, I get the grandfathered height, height difference, but uh, we sent them back last month. Has anything changed as far as the recommendation on our end?
Uh, the application has not changed. Um, ADR just basically took a second look at it and made, reiterated their recommendations from the month prior, so no change.
But didn't ADR make different recommendations this time? Like, the first time they said a bunch of stuff and then this time they said different stuff.
Slightly different. A lot of them were repeat comments. Um, the lowering of the sign is a new comment.
So I, I don't, I don't agree with that. You've got a grand, you've got a grandfathered sign and if he doesn't wanna lower it, he doesn't have to lower it. So I, I, well, let's take that off the table, uh, as far as the, as far as the application goes. Um, I don't disagree with the opaque and the, and the writing as far as the white uh, sign goes, but I, I don't think we need to make him lower the sign. Um, what are the, what, how can we move forward on this as far as the, as far as what's up there and uh, recommendations on change? So again, if we look at the ADR recommendations, not specific to uh, not specific to the height, um, it's changing the faces now that we've, now that it's been brought forward. And again, I, I don't care that they've already been done. Um, that's, that's a mistake on the, on the application, on the applicant's side. So if they've already paid for those signs to be done, that's, that's immaterial to our conversation. So we wanna make sure that they're, they're right in the way we wanna look at them. Heather?
So my recollection from, and then I just wanna point out that we have two hands raised.
Yeah. You're, you're all garbled Heather, your audio's not very good.
Is it better now?
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
Um, my recollection is that ADR's original problem was that the sign, the two signs were different. It looked different. Even though it's one business, they look different. Um, I don't know if they had said last time, maybe Sam, you can clarify if, if they requested that he remove the writing, but they thought, they wanted the signs to look the same and uh, this time they're saying remove those two words. Is that, is that the same? Sam, from last one?
They didn't say that specifically, but they did just say that it was redundant. Um, so, and, and I do wanna just point out one thing in terms of compliance. Um, it is only within the Central Business Performance District that you cannot have a white background on an internally illuminated sign. So in this instance, it is permitted, but ADR has been consistent in making the recommendation that white background signs be opaque when they are internally illuminated.
Are you aware of all the white signs that are on Manchester Street?
Yes.
They're not opaque, they do not light up at night.
What is it? Suzanne?
Um, so I'm, I'm just a little confused because the application said Rupert Dance. Where does that go on the sign?
Rupert Dance is the owner of the property. I don't know how that got on there.
Okay.
We are the lesee of the property, it should be our name. Um, that was originally through the building inspector who helped us fill out the form and um, Bob Nato. And uh, he was, he was the one that told us what to put on there. So uh, he's the owner of the property, but we're the lesee, we're, it's our sign, it's our, our input on it.
Alright, so my other question is, you've got a sign here, they've got a note has interim. And then the proposed is that you have the pools and hot tub service right below Empire. And then you have the reader board underneath it and then, and then it's all open?
There's an open space because we took out one of uh, the signs that was there from the, from the past business. It was a uh,
Okay, okay, that's, yeah, okay, so that's the, yeah, so.
I took that out.
Yeah.
And um, that's an open space there. And then uh, Bob Nato came in and saw it and said, no, you can't have that open space. So we had talked to him about uh, getting a permit and a variance to move the reader board up in conjunction to the top sign.
Right.
Um, and so we put in a variance and the variance came back saying we didn't have a hardship, so we couldn't have a variance. So, I mean, you guys, well, I don't know who has it, but the planning department's got four hundred and seventy-five dollars of ours for the variance. Now, he told me I had to go for a sign permit, so you have another three hundred dollars for a sign permit and I just don't really know what's going on here. Um, I've got all that money just sitting in, I don't know, somebody's office. And, you know, I'm hearing ten different things. Go up and down, go side to side, change them from white to black. Uh, I'm just looking for direction here, you know? I don't wanna spend fifteen thousand dollars to make this all happen. I mean, the last meeting, we were told that we're gonna have to lower that top sign down. And, you know, the bottom sign, pools, hot tubs and service, I don't think anybody's gonna mistake that there's two building, two, two people in that building. Um, it's Empire Pools and it says Empire Pools underneath too.
So I guess, can I just make one more comment?
Yes, please.
So, um, and I, I totally appreciate it's grandfathered, so that maybe um, that is like something that we can't really enforce, even though it would be nicer. What would happen if we just had the pools, hot tubs and service and the telephone number right underneath Empire Pools? And then, and then we just have the coming soon.
That's a read, that's a reader board.
I know, the coming soon, the reader board, but have it, so I'm just trying to look, the picture that, there is no picture. So, I, I, I guess I'm trying to, so basically if the reader board was bigger and there wasn't a space, that would be okay. Is that, who was the person that told you that there couldn't be a space between the reader board?
Uh, I was told that by the design committee and I was also told that by uh, the um, Bob Nato. He said, once we took that sign out, um, which gave us less square footage of signage than we had before, once we took that simplicity sign out, that's dead space and we could never put anything back in there. Those were his exact words. Which we said at that point in time, okay, we can live with that, um, cause we had actually planned on putting something else there. Um, possibly a sign from one of our hot tub manufacturers or pool manufacturers, but we just don't have it as of right now. So we said, you know what, we can live with that, that's fine. Um, all we did with the reader board is just had it redone, cause it was thirty years old and falling apart. So none of the signs are any different in size and shape. Um, Greenland's was a white sign with green background. I have a white sign with blue background.
You have a, you have a white sign with blue letters versus a white sign with green letters. Go ahead Suzanne.
So like, I'm just trying to like, I, I think it's better if the pools and spa goes closer to Empire at the top?
That's one thing that we, we had talked about.
And, and then?
We looked at having that, you know, what it would cost us to have that done. That would be the cheapest of any of the options uh, to have them cut that off and move it up higher. I have no problem doing that.
Okay, and so what is the problem with the reader board being right underneath that?
Nothing. Again, ADR's recommendation, they, they thought it would look like two different businesses. So I'm with you Suzanne on that. I think that the, so in our packets, it's shown as the proposed version of it. So if we can key in on that and forget the space, uh, forget lowering the, the sign. So if it looks like that, which is on our screens at the moment, um, again, the only issue is the, is the, is the existing sign. So are we?
Right.
Do we, uh, do we feel that, that we take ADR's recommendation to have the faces redone, so the, the uh, the white is opaque? Uh, again, it's ADR recommendations over the years consistently have been that way. So there's some signs on there I know that aren't and some of those signs have been up for twenty, thirty years that are, that are white backgrounds.
Well, I think with the um, pool and spa being right underneath the um, Empire, that seems to me like it's just the same business. And maybe if it was, I, you know, the opaque thing is probably um, more doable. We, I think we could just like, the, reducing the height of the sign just might be egregious because it's grandfathered. But I don't have a problem with the um, the pool and spa being closer to the Empire because then it seems connected and maybe it would seem more connected if it was white.
Right.
I don't know.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Sam, can you get rid of that screen? Jeff?
So Chairman, I, is the whole issue of the white background at night when it's lit up?
Yeah.
And not so much during the day?
Yes.
Is there any way to dim the light in the background so that it's not as bright, bright white at night? To try and maybe work halfway?
No, that's LED and there's no way to dim that as far as I know. Um, we do have it on a timer, uh, so it comes on, well, right now it's probably coming on around eight o'clock and it goes off around ten o'clock. So it's on for about two hours.
Okay, um, Heather, I see a hand in the audience. We're gonna, uh, Mister Huberty, if you could just hang tight for a sec, we'll see if there's a question in the audience regarding this.
So I have a number in three zero eight two seven six. You have been permitted to talk. Can you give us your name? You saw me.
There you go.
Hello?
Yeah, could you state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Kevin Sotarian. I'm business partner with uh, Jeff Huberty. Um, I, I mean, at this point, we're just trying to find out, um, you know, what you guys want. We've had so many different variations. Um, we just wanna make this right. I, I, I think lifting the reader board up under the other sign should satisfy everybody. I mean, it does uh, show it's the same business. Um, you know, color-wise, like Jeff said, the sign is only on for a couple of hours, so it's not uh, it's not like it's on all night. Um, and we're just trying to find out wha, wha, what you guys want. We've had so many different comments, uh, we're, we're kind of at a loss here. So we're hoping we can come to some kind of conclusion tonight.
Oh, we will. Heather?
I just wanted to say about the, as far as. I just wanted to say about the, as far as, as I can tell, the, the, most of the issues have sort of been ticked off here. And the only remaining one is, do you want the text to stay the same? I mean, the, with the opacity of the sign, it's not a requirement in this district. So I think that it's, it's good that ADR has been consistently asking people to do that. I'm not sure if we can, and, and if people are gonna do it. I think for the most part, the people that they've asked to do it have done it. Um, but I don't think that we have required anybody or conditioned an approval on them doing it when it's not in the central business performance district. So just to keep that in mind, I don't know that we've required anybody to do that who did not want to do it when it was not required in that district.
Yeah, okay. So uh, I, I, you know, again, and, and we want to be good neighbors here. I mean, we want to be good citizens. Again, you know, we, we didn't bring this on. I mean, I think you guys are frustrated and I, I, I understand that. But again, you know, taking signs down and, and, and having signs refaced without permits and without, you know, just doing it the way you want to do it is not the way we do it. So I, I'm sensitive to the fact that you want to, you don't want to spend the money on it, but I'm also not gonna bend the rules. If, if there's, if something's being done, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check every, every, every box and dot every I and cross every T. So I apologize that we've put you through the wringer, but um, that's sometimes the nature of the beast. So with that, I'm happy to make a recommendation to approve the sign uh as it's submitted in the proposed picture that's in our packet, which is leaving the, the faces as they are. Um, pulling up the reader board underneath the existing sign and leaving it at the current height. So I'll make that motion if someone would like to second it. If not, we'll see where we go.
I'll second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Uh, we got a roll call vote, Heather?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Uh, let's close the public hearing before we take a vote, if we could.
Have a question.
Yes, sir. Sorry, sir.
Do we, did we resolve the op- the opaque versus the white or whatever? Uh?
No. Uh, well, yeah, we did. It's not, it's not a zoning requirement. It's a recommendation from ADR. The district allows a, a white uh ex- internally illuminated sign um in this district. And again, ADR would like to see them all opaque, but in this district, they can have a white sign.
Okay.
Byron?
And is there?
I'm sorry, I'll defer, I'll uh.
Go ahead, David.
Uh, just, and the last thing is that um, is there any, on the lighting itself, the applicant has stated that that it will be lit from eight till ten o'clock. Is, is there any hard and fast on that or is um?
I think it's, I think it's hours.
Could be on all night?
That's right. And hours of operation is typically the way they'll do the lighting and then turn it off, but there's nothing to say it couldn't be on all night.
Thank you.
Yep. Byron?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I uh just wanted to say before we, before we vote on this that um, going back to last month's meeting of, of this body, uh, you know, i- if I were this applicant and there were any additional costs, frankly, I would have them eaten by his sign company.
Yeah.
I agree.
Diligence. We have no authority to do that, but if this cost five thousand, five hundred or fifteen thousand dollars, I would get it out of, I would do everything I could to get it out of the sign company, because their job was to find out what permitting process was required in this community and then follow it. That's their job as people who you're hired. So uh, I, I'm sorry you've been through this, but frankly, I think your, your gripe is with your longtime sign company. If I remember, you've done business with them in the past. So um, I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion. In fact, that's why I seconded it. But uh, anything that additional cost to raise that sign or whatever, I would have your lawyers go to the sign company and get it from them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Byron. Any other comments before we move on? Uh, we've got a motion and a second on the table. We'll take a roll call vote. Heather, if we can.
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
No.
Uh, Member Smithmire?
I'm muted.
Member Smithmire?
I'm sorry.
Member Rosenberg?
Yes.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Counsel Chaplin?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries. Um, that moves us on. And again, we uh we are diligent in our signs, so anybody watching, pay attention. Um, let's move on to item seven B in our, uh, in our agenda. We've got another set of signs, Heather, if we can read that into the motion, into the uh record?
Barlow Signs on behalf of Northland Bank request ADR approval for the installation of two externally illuminated wall signs at one ninety North Main Street in the urban central district. And I believe Sam also has an update on this application.
Great. I do. Um, so last month, uh, there was a, a larger sign package that came before the board, um, with a couple of different signs across the property. Um, the board approved most of them. Um, there are two wall signs that were in question and I will share my screen now. Um These wall signs were on the uh north and south façades of this building, um, this being front facing uh North Main Street. Uh, the applicant has responded to ADR comments um in, in dressing up the sign a little bit with a decorative border, reducing the size of it. Um, ADR's main comment at this point now is they recommended approval of the northern facade. Um, however, they had issue with the southern facade because there is a tree here. And then also, um, I believe there's either a roof line or some porch that would block um visual from uh any northbound traffic on North Main Street. So they thought it was uh not necessary because you have a very short window within which to see the sign. Well, trees die, so I, I, I get the, I get the, I get the roof line comment, but the trees, we've got to assume that um, maybe the trees won't be there. So let's uh, uh, open the public hearing if we can, Heather, see if the applicant's here.
Are here and I have just allowed.
Hi, good evening. Um, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could state your name for the record?
Yes, uh, my name is Brandon Courier. Um, I'm in Merrimack, New Hampshire, and there is no one in the room.
Great. Thank you for doing that the right way. So tell us, uh, what's updated from the last month when you were here? I don't know if you were here or not, but the last month we heard this as well.
Yep, yes, I, I was definitely in front of you. Um, so uh, thank you, Sam, for going through that. Um, so tonight we're just seeking approval uh for both of those wall signs. Um, and as you mentioned, uh, respectfully from the beginning, uh, we've taken recommendations from both the ADR uh and this board. Uh, we've reduced the wall signs uh to be well uh under the permissible square footage. Uh, we've changed the look of the sign. We added a backer, uh, with a decorative border uh to better blend in with the uh, with the style of the building, uh, to not be as offensive. Uh, we even removed a sign uh that was on the railing facing uh the parking lot. Um, because one of the members uh wasn't uh in favor of what the sign said uh for information. Um, so when we uh visited them uh most recently, the ADR, uh, as Sam mentioned, uh, there was, there was positive feedback uh with the new designs. Um, so all we are here for uh this evening is seeking approval uh for these two wall signs. Um, and, and we've been uh very, very respectful again to, to everybody's comments, uh, to try to work with you guys to, to get these signs approved. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions of this applicant from the board? Nope. Oops, Jeff?
I'm just curious, where does the whole issue with the monument sign stand?
I think we approved that, didn't we? Heather? No, they, that was a variance and the variance was granted at the uh May ZVA meeting. So that will go before ADR next month. Okay, so that'll still come back to us. Okay. Um, any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience wish to address this application? Whoops, uh, hang on Suzanne. Uh, no member of the audience. I don't see anybody. Suzanne, go ahead.
So if these signs were approved on the building, does that allow future use to have signs on the building?
Just like that, yep. Well, actually, they could probably be bigger. I think they could even be bigger by right. I think they have uh, they have some square footage based on how big the building is, so they're, they're under the square footage number that's here. And again, I think this is, this is one of those where in the downtown corridor, uh, zoning looks at it and says, this is what it is, thinking it's a, you know, a brick facade, you know, new building where this is an older, you know, an older type of building, you know, we find, we might find this an offensive sign, but legally, they can put the sign up. So it's, it's our job to make sure it looks good and uh is, I think the guy from Barlow said it at least offensive or less offensive than prior, so.
Correct.
Well, I, I would be in a position to like, just say, I think the monument sign would be enough, cause no matter what they do, it's gonna be tacked on. And the building was never designed to have that.
And I, I don't, I don't disagree. I don't, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's, no, I think that's just.
It, it's, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you, but I, I think again, by right, they have the ability to put that sign up by right. So Byron, I see your hand. Go ahead.
I'm muted, Byron. Uh, yeah, thanks, Jeff. I was trying to get my cursor over the unmuted. Well aware. Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, it's their right to, you know, they're within their, their rights to put the signs up. Uh, I drove by there today. I frankly think they're wasting their money on the southern facing sign. It's not just the tree, it's the fact that the southerly building is so close to this one that it really come, unless you're standing where this photograph uh, it's, you know, for location one is, unless you're standing from that, that position, driving north on North Main Street, you really can't see that sign. You can't see that, that part of the building at all. Uh, so you know, it's in there, right? Uh, I'll vote in favor of it because they can do it. But frankly, I think they're, they're wasting whatever money they're gonna spend on that northern sign, uh, southern sign.
I don't disagree with that either. Any other member of the uh board have a question, comment, concern? And I think I asked before about the audience. I don't see any hands have gone up since then. Uh, so again, again, it's, it's one of those ones where we might not like it, but uh, they've done, I think, everything we've asked them to do. They've reduced it, made it less offensive. Thank you for that. Um, would someone like to make a motion to approve those signs as submitted uh with architectural designer review comments?
I don't know.
I got a motion from David. I got a second from Byron, I believe. That's okay. I'll take your second, Byron. Uh, all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Uh, Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Muted Suzanne.
Member Smith. Sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. No.
Okay.
Uh, Member Rosenberg?
Yes.
Member Santa Cruz?
Yes.
Member Fox?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you again, uh, Barlow Signs for doing the due diligence and the work on it. We appreciate it. Uh, let's move on to item seven C in our agenda, if we could.
Seven C, Cole Glay, Glat, I don't have his last name. I apologize, Cole. You can tell us when you come on. Uh, request ADR approval for the installation of a new awning and wall sign at one three eight North Main Street in the central business performance district. Um, Sam, do you have a little summary of that?
Sure. Um, let me share this. Uh, so it's a two-parter. Um, we have this sign here, uh, as well as the awning itself. Um, this came before ADR uh early this month. Um, ADR's primary comment was, uh, this sign was originally uh reversed where it was a black text on a white background. Um, per ADR's comment, the applicant has switched that to be more in line uh with the uh facade of the building and then also specifically uh these cast iron columns. Okay, and just for the record, that in our packet, it's wrong, so make sure you're looking at the image that's on the screen there in our packet. It's got the other white background, black letters, um, with the sign with the uh dimensions penciled in front of it. Uh, okay, uh, any questions from the board on this? I don't know if we need to hear anything from the applicant. I'll uh look for any public testimony or opposition. Uh, did any member of the audience have a, an opposition to this application? You can make yourself known. I don't see anybody. Um, would someone like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted? So moved?
Seconded.
Motion is made by uh Jeff Santa Cruz, seconded by Matt Hicks. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Smithmire? Member Smithmire?
Aye, sorry, my mute button was stuck.
Member Rosenberg?
She just froze.
I know, she's, we'll come back. Uh, Member Santa Cruz? Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, aye. Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Counsel Chaplin?
Aye.
Uh, Member Regan?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on. I don't have a. One, one moment, we, we actually needed a vote on the awning. Uh, there was the, the sign needed a vote and the awning, because that's a building permit in performance district that needs a vote as well. Oh, okay. Sorry.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
I'll move approval.
Seconded.
Approval for the awning are submitted. So motions were made by Counselor Chaplin, seconded by Matt Hicks. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Counsel Chaplin?
Aye.
And Member Regan?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. So both of those are set, so sign and the awning are good to go. That moves us on to what we'll call item seven D. It's not labeled in my agenda, uh, seven D, but I'm gonna call it seven D. Uh, if we could read that into the record, Heather?
Lululele Yost requests ADR approval for the construction of new deck at forty-six Center Street in the central business performance district. Uh, this is just a residential de- deck that King is coming for you because it's, it's in the performance district. It's a building permit in performance district, which requires ADR approval.
So this is just a residential deck, looks like uh back of a house with eight, uh, with three steps. What is it, eight feet by eight feet, I think, on the plan here? Um, I don't think we need any testimony on that or any comments. It is a public hearing, so we'll open a public hearing and see if there's any public testimony. Anybody in the audience have, uh, have any issues with this deck as proposed? If you can make yourself known to the host. If not, we will close the public hearing and uh we will take a motion. If someone would like to make a motion to approve that deck as submitted?
So moved.
Motion is made uh by Jeff Santa Cruz, seconded by, who seconded that? John?
John.
John Regan seconded that. Uh, all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Counsel Chaplin?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you very much. And we will move into section eight of our agenda, which is site plan subdivision and conditional use permit applications. We'll move on to item eight A. Uh, if we could read that into the record?
I mean, GIA requests an amendment to a previously approved minor condominium subdivision to accommodate a minor, a minor building addition at sixteen Thompson Street in downtown residential district. Um, there's, this is just an amendment to his previous plat. He added a bathroom onto the structure, so he had to get the plat re-approved and re-recorded.
Okay, so no external changes to the building, right, Heather?
Well, there, the external change is that he's doing a little building addition, so that would be considered a change, but it's just a, it's basically a small addition.
Okay. Um, there's a public hearing component, so we'll open the public hearing. Um, don't know that we need the applicant to speak to it, but if any member of the audience has a question or concern, if you could make yourself known.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm Lisa tonight. Did you do a determination of completeness as one required?
I don't think, is there one on there? No, there is. So we'll do that as well. So let's do that. So we've got a determination of completeness component to this. Um, this project is not a development of regional impact and we will hear the public hearing tonight. So we've got uh a motion, if someone would like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Counselor Chaplin and seconded by Matt Hicks. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Uh, Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Counsel Chaplin?
Aye.
I apologize. I, I said there was none, but there was, so I didn't need to confuse things.
You teed me up. Okay, so there we go. So we've got determination completeness component. Public hearing's been open. Um, and again, I, I think it's pretty straightforward. If we have questions, we'll ask if the applicant's here, but if any member of the audience has any questions, if you could make yourself known to the host. Uh, any questions from the board regarding this application? I think it's fairly straightforward. If not, we'd uh close the public hearing and take a motion to grant the amendment to the minor subdivision as outlined in three point three of our packet with uh conditions one, two and three. Would someone like to, let's close the public hearing first. Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing and would someone like to make a motion to grant that amendment to the minor subdivision approval uh subdivision as outlined?
The move. Seconded.
Motion made by uh John Regan and seconded by Matt Hicks. All those in favor by roll call.
Chairman Woodson.
Aye.
Number Fox.
Aye.
Member Smith Meyer.
Aye.
Member Rosenberg.
Aye.
Member Regan.
Aye.
Member Hicks.
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz.
Aye.
And Counselor Champlin.
Aye.
Okay, moves us on to eight B in our agenda. If we could read that into the record, please.
This group on behalf of Bricksmore Capital requests major site plan approval for construction of three new buildings for restaurant, retail and coffee shop use. With a drive through facility at eighty Store Street in opportunity corridor performance district. And I believe uh Sam will have an update on this.
Uh sure. Um so you all are familiar with this project in its latest form. Um again, they came back to ADR earlier this month. Um some fairly significant changes to the facade of the middle building uh as well as the uh coffee quick service building uh on the southern side of the lot. Um they also uh refer the discussion about the one ten grill. Um there is definitely still the desire to have the uh entrance facing Store Street. Or at least one entrance facing Store Street. Um it it was understood that um the one ten grill is not willing to do that, make that accommodation. Um however, um we uh we understand the importance of that, but also um they have made some significant accommodations for uh place making. And uh pedestrian access through the site and then also around uh to the northern entrance of the one ten grill through the patio.
Okay, uh is the applicant here? If you could make yourself known to the uh to the host, we'll grant you uh access and uh get a quick update from you.
Yes, I, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Will I be on a screen or just uh talking?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
I can promote you to panelist if you, it's up to the chair.
Right, either way, uh whatever's more comfortable, sometimes face to face, even though we're not face to face is uh is better.
Yeah, that's better if you, it's good for us if you want to do that, that's fine.
I'll promote you to panelist, Reuben. And I've got, I've got Chris and Chris and Reuben.
Uh Chris should be with us. Uh Sean Lang should be with us as well, the architect. And uh Frankie Campion, who who was listening in transit, uh will be uh the panelists as well. Thank you. Video and then uh as well, um I think he's listening, but Ryan Guine of my office also will uh will be in attendance from Bricksmore tonight, so.
Yeah, I've seen him.
Okay, applied island shortly, so.
Okay, my.
You guys went through the signs a lot faster than I thought, so. We're here, we're here at seven fifty one, which is great. So um thanks Sam for that summary. Um as Sam said, uh we did attend the ARB. Um earlier in the month, showing them the uh changes we made to the plan, um which I will share. Uh since that, uh we also uh made some other changes. Um just more clarifications. There were some landscaping missing from the uh renderings. Um so we just wanted to make sure all the plans were coordinated, um et cetera. So I can walk you through um those those uh changes. See, share my screen. Okay, so here's the overall uh perspective. Um so some of the major changes, uh as Sam uh mentioned, the middle building. Uh we changed the architecture completely to meet some of the goals that the ARB mentioned, and I believe the plenty more as well. To connect more to the downtown, um to the current architecture um of uh downtown Concord. Um entered glass, um brick. Um there were some comments on some of the wood material that we have here, um so that we still um can discuss. Um we also revised the um the potential Starbucks building. Um to match more in line to what was shown previously during the zoning board um hearings. And as well on the one ten grill, as Sam mentioned, uh the door will still be located on the parking lot side and on Pleasant Street Extension. But we um add glazing and spandrel glass to the two locations, one in the middle and two and um. And to the end cap, uh to break up that facade, um to make it look um as the front, so. Um in the site plan, as I mentioned, nothing really changed since the last plenty born meeting, except for coordination. We added landscaping around the drive through area. Um and um and the trees that were in front of the uh drive through as well. We can walk through, uh all the elevations were also updated, so now they're showing correctly. We apologize for last time. Um so this is the north elevation, the patio side on Pleasant Street Extension, uh the one ten grill entrance, um and the patio side. Um none of this material changed uh since last time. Here's the west elevation facing Store Street, as I mentioned, the window, and we added the two spandrel uh windows as well uh to that front elevation. And then you can see the patio, um and some of the other uh elements that we added from the parks and other landscaping. The south elevation facing the parking, um this did not change as well. And then the uh east elevation, sorry, this was the uh Carter, this is the service Carter south elevation. And uh and then the east elevation facing the parking lot, um entrance on the corner, um emergency access as well as the rest. This did not change.
So can you go back to that south elevation? So that's the south elevation, that's as you're coming through the parking lot. Uh well, excuse me, coming through the driveway and then you'd come up in front of the the one ten there and turn right into the parking lot for the for the restaurant, right?
Yeah, so this facade faces the um third, the second middle building. So um this is the service Carter that we created.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry for that. Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Reuben, this is Frankie. I think I think they got that backwards. But this is, this faces the the alley between the two buildings, the one that was just up on the screen.
Yeah.
There you go.
So that's the south elevation, I apologize, so.
Correct, that doesn't face the extension.
Right, so the elevation with the dining, the ex, the outside dining is what people are going to see, that one.
Exactly.
Exactly. Yep, this is on Pleasant Street Extension as you come up the road, you can see the patio, all the.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, thank you Frankie. And if I missed anything, please uh add any architectural elements. Um so this is back to the um Starbucks uh potential building. Um again, this was changed uh to meet more in line of what was shown previously, uh the north elevation, uh which is the entrance, one of the entrances. Um this is uh, this is facing um as well the other spec building. This was modified facing Store Street. This would be the south elevation, which is the drive through. And the east elevation facing the parking lot, um one item that we still have to add here, um this window would would most probably be the pickup window. Um that we all talked about, so that will have to uh change as well. And then um the best is the um. The middle building, which was changed, like I said before. Um entering the elements of uh mimicking downtown and other architecture throughout uh Concord. Some brick, um glazing, um we did show some horizontal wood cladding, the ARB mentioned, um they didn't love, so we can look at this material. Um we really thought that this presence um um really showed the connection to downtown and was a major improvement to previous. This is facing the parking lot. Sorry, the south elevation and then the uh east elevation facing the parking lot. So this was kind of uh where Frankie and team um took their inspiration from some of the other um. Buildings within the city of Concord that I mentioned and brought in those elements um to to the um architectural of the three buildings. And then these are just the overall perspectives. Um aerial view, looking from Store Street. Second building that was revised. And aerial three. And then the overall back. So again, we really feel this was a major improvement, meeting what the goals um of both the ARB and planning board we heard last time. Uh we still keeping the landscaping and the activists of Store Street uh that meets the master plan and the twenty twenty vision. And uh we're looking forward to some comments and hopefully a favorable decision this evening. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh I see Suzanne's hand up. Suzanne. Suzanne.
Okay, I keep forgetting I have to hold this. Got it. No, I just learned I had, I could push this bar and it would make it start, sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
Um so. How is it that our standard sidewalk cross section has a landscape median between the curb? And the sidewalk, and I'm assuming that people are going to still be walking down the sidewalk. Whether or not they're attending these. Um they're, I mean, just walking by. So I was a little distressed to um. See that that detail wasn't extended to this part of Store Street, because I think it's really important. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Chris, can I touch upon that a little bit more?
Pardon?
I believe Chris, our engineer can touch upon that, those elements.
Well, I was asking Heather, because I think that's a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I'm I'm wondering, because that's the standard for a street cross section where we have a landscape median. And we have the sidewalk and that we're like woefully missing any kind of landscaping in front of these buildings related to the street.
Are you talking about shade trees?
I'm talking about just having the landscape median, yes, with the shade trees that would be there. Between the curb and the sidewalk.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I think that's an important detail that we should carry, especially in this area because of the traffic.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree. To be honest, that wasn't something that that we looked at. Um.
I guess what made me notice.
Maybe an oversight on our, on our part. We didn't, we sort of just like, they didn't include it in their design and we sort of didn't force them to. We didn't even, we sort of said, oh, that's not part of, you know, not part of it, but you're right, it it could be.
Well, it's just like, there's so much a asphalt or paving that we've got the walks on the inside, we've got the the sidewalk. And I'm, I was a little distressed by all the curves and.
I think part of uh, and I'll, I'll turn it over to them in a minute, but I think part of it has to do with when we were going through the design process with them. Um you know, originally they just had sort of grass in these areas with some shrubs in front. And you know, we had stressed, you know, these should be closet areas, patio areas, maybe landscape areas, interactive public areas. And so this was their attempt to create that. There's a lot of topography going on here too. There are um slopes and in retaining walls and things like that. And I believe that part of the request last month was for more detail about all of those spaces, so that the ADR and the the planning board could better understand. Uh what I'm trying to verbally tell you right now. So I don't know if those ever were created or provided, but there were requests for additional details to better understand. Those are, those are some pretty complicated spaces there. When you, when you're seeing the walkway, it's that, that's actually a different level. That's an easier accessible.
No, I got that. I'm talking about the curb, like the streetscape. And then there's that, if you look at their rendering of that circle thing, which I'm, I can't quite figure out what the purpose is. Um over at the entrance. But I don't know, yeah, outside, yes, yeah. So if you look at the plan, there's very limited space between the, whatever that is. And. The end, and yet in their rendering, they've got this lush landscape thing going, and there's no room for it. And then, so anyway, so I'm concerned about that because I think our streetscape should. Be consistent for the reasons that we wanted it in the first place, like um traffic calming and a sense of protection for the pedestrian from the cars.
Um and just one last comment. I think on Main Street, so on Main Street, we've got the brick paver area that has the street trees. And then um and then the sidewalk is on the other side of that. So that's kind of our, you know, I I don't know if this is the standard, like grass strip sidewalk. That we're going, we're going for urban, right? So if we look at Main Street, Main Street's got brick pavers, which is the furniture area and then sidewalk next to that.
Yeah, I get that, but I don't see any kind of protection or um, there's just a lot of asphalt and there's no shade trees along the street. And then I was just wondering what the width, if you look, um, because I think part of this proposal is the um, there's a number eighteen. In the parking area coming in. Is that part of their proposal? I saw there was like um in the, okay, there it is right there. That, see the green strip as you're coming out of the parking area?
This area?
That and then across. So what's that?
Uh landscaping.
Like what?
So I would have to refer back to the landscaping plan, but I believe it's it's mostly grass.
Well, so that's a problem, I think. But how wide is it? Because I can't tell from the plan.
Chris, do you have that dimension?
Yes, four feet wide.
So I think if you're going to plant anything, it has to be at least five feet wide with the curb.
That is one of staff's comments.
Huh?
That is one of staff's comments. Um those spaces there could be converted to compact because they don't have a wide enough at a drive aisle. Uh if we switch over to the site plan, um you'd see that the drive aisle is short by a couple of feet. So if they actually had changed those uh parking spaces to compact, you gain enough feet for the adequate drive aisle. And you could also add a foot or two to the landscaping strip, which would be enough for trees.
So I'm assuming they're not adding parking.
Not over there, no.
Right, but I'm, I, my recollection is that that parking area is woefully lacking in. Shade trees for mitigation. That's my, just my memory. I'm thinking that a lot of that was built before we had regulations. So I just think that that should not be shown as grass. So I I I have some issues with the um, the obviously, the landscape layout and the lack of. Those amenities and too much uh walkways that really don't serve a real purpose.
So on the plan that's there now, it says trees are down in the bottom right hand corner. Um you know, what uh what are we, what are you looking for Suzanne? As far as, are you looking for trees at the street side as opposed to on the inside of the of the walkway?
Well, even if you look at the renderings, it's not what I'm looking for, is what I think we should, we should. Be looking for, not what I'm looking for, but I think that this is a streetscape.
Yep.
And it's going to be like, I'm like, it's going to set the tone for this area, hopefully. And. I don't think the landscaping reflects it. And I think that you can, I mean, there's a lot of landscaping improvements that don't succeed because they're not planned well. Just because you put like, you know, draw it, doesn't mean it's going to live.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that also, um so in their elevations, they didn't put any of the trees in the elevations. So it's not like giving us the impression that they have them there. Um we interest, I wish they had because then you could, yeah, they're not, I don't see any of the trees in the plan, in the the concept in this elevation. Is that intended?
I mean, I I don't know that we even looked at a landscape plan, but I'm guessing that.
We did. I mean, this, this has been fully, fully designed by a landscape architect and has been reviewed by staff. Um and very thoughtful of what species were picked out, um and and how it's designed, so you know, it's a little bit.
You don't have those trees on the, on the elevations, do you?
We, they're showing a little bit, but usually when, when you add the trees, you kind of don't really get to see the full architecture. And I think the point of today was to review the architecture, so we didn't want to necessarily hide that. Um so.
Mr. Chairman, the, there's a landscape plan on page nine of our packet. It does not, it does not cover the median on the north side of the entrance there uh to the plaza. But it certainly shows significant numbers or number of trees uh uh on the uh median that's to the south of that entryway. But in other words, the same side of the entrance to the plaza that uh, there we go. Just to kind of clarify our discussion.
Thank you Byron. Go ahead Suzanne.
Well, no, I'm, I, I have a problem with the sidewalk being a. being against the curb, the way it is. And then with the, um, those small beds in the front. I just think the landscape layout is not going to be successful the way we would want to see it based on requirements.
So my suggestion would simply be to switch flip so that you have the landscape areas against the curb and then the sidewalk on the other side of it. But maybe Chris can speak to the feasibility of that with the, with the, um, grading.
Let's hold on to that for just a second. I just want to get through a couple of other questions here. I saw Byron's hand up first. But, uh, Chris or, uh, Ruben, if you can just make a note of the, of the location of the sidewalk and the trees and, and the landscaping, I want to come back to that in a second. Byron?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, the, the first question I have is this, and I, I have, uh, probably three questions. Uh, the first is, um, uh, the middle building, I, I'm asking for clarification. Will the middle, will the middle building be, uh, built uh, prior to, uh, Bricksmore identifying and uh, locking in a tenant for that building?
Uh, that's not our intention. The intention is to build it once we identify the tenants. So our leasing team is out, out there currently and by the time, it, it, it could be, once we get approval and through design, we could have tenants, but we are, as, as said before, we're looking to phase this project.
Okay, is it, can I follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is it likely that, uh, that the desires of the tenant, whoever that may be, might have an impact on the design?
We don't think so. We, we tried to design it as flexible as possible to give, um, the opportunity for both restaurants and typical retail to, um, lend their design to that architecture. So, um, there could be maybe minor changes and we'll come back to the board if that, if we see that. But I think the current design lends well to be flexible.
More than one bill, more than one business in those spots, or one business?
Unknown, but we'd probably end up being two.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Uh, so, uh, one of the, if I recall correctly, one of the charges that the planning board gave at its April meeting, uh, uh, to, uh, Bricksmore, uh, was to conduct a charrette with, uh, ADR. Um, was, was that, uh, charrette, uh, completed?
So we did reach out, we tried to, um, get an ADR, um, charrette. Um, it, it seemed in coordination with Sam, there wasn't enough time. And by the time it was, um, scheduled, we met with the, in the last May. And we, we used that really as the charrette.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, uh, more of a, of a puzzling statement. I'm trying to get my head around 110 Grill's, uh, resistance to moving, uh, the, uh, having an entrance, put it that way, on, um, on, uh, Store Street. I, I realize that right now they, or actually, I haven't really seen a floor plan, uh, if, a legible floor plan, uh, for the 110 Grill was not in our packet. Um, but, uh, I, 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 I assume that despite the window being put in the, you know, the additional window being placed facing Store Street, that, that the kitchen is somewhere in that area, because I believe it was in that uh, southwestern corner, uh, uh, which at, during the last meeting was really shown as a, as just a solid wall. Um, I'm having trouble understanding their resistance, because, thank you, thank you for this. Uh, and I, I, I gather, I think I can see where the kitchen is now. Uh, because clearly, that's not a problem for them in Manchester, where they're on Elm Street and where their, their entrance is right on, on, uh, on the street. I also wondered, are they aware that they're sharing this parking lot with the State Liquor Store, with possibly sells pizza, poss- possibly with other businesses and that, you know, it's quite likely that people might want to be coming and, and entering the restaurant from Store Street rather than everybody parking there in the parking uh, area that you show in this, in this illustration?
Yeah, I mean, they're well aware. Um, you know, two things to note. One, um, you know, part of the design and, and several meetings. Um, 110 Grill did come to a compromise, um, to, to shift the, um, patio. And with that, we actually added an entrance not too far off of the edge of the corner of the building, right off the patio. So if you are walking up Store Street, you could come in here. Um, operationally, they feel that this is their best foot forward, um, and they cannot change. Um, they still feel that majority of their customers will be driving and parking, uh, which would lend to the need of the entrance being on the parking lot side, and then how the business lays out.
All right. Yeah, but, but please, I mean, you know, I, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate their concerns. I mean, please understand that, that I, I'm not going to speak for anybody else on City Council, but you know, for myself, I kind of held my nose and, and approved the zoning change for this project, uh, based on, uh, the storefronts being along Store Street, because that's a long-term goal of ours. There was a lot that I felt the cities, uh, gave up to make this project happen, uh, including upper story, uh, uh, office or residential space. Um, and so every incremental loss of that original image makes this project less appealing to me. Uh, although I think that you have made a significant uh, improvements over the last version of this that we saw. So what, to 110 and to you is kind of a minor issue. Please understand that to me, it's a, it's a major issue, because this is really going to be a determining factor in the future development. I also have a concern, um, if the chairman doesn't mind me saying this now, rather than before we vote.
Sure.
Um, I also have a concern, despite your, your, your good intentions, that, you know, you're, you're making a, a lot of hay on the plaza in front of the future tenant. My biggest fear is that that tenant's gonna come in and say, well, 110's not, doesn't have an entrance on Store Street. So why should I have a, an entrance on Store Street? I want this to be like a suburban shopping mall. I want to have my entrance and my big facade and everything facing the parking lot. And then what we end up with, with is two out of three buildings with, uh, uh, no access from Store Street. Um, and, uh, all the reasons that I voted for this project uh, will be out the window. So that's what's framing and informing my questions, and that's what's framing my consideration of the project, with, with due respect.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. And, and, you know, one thing I, I've been hearing is that, is the door, door, door location. You know, when, when we asked for the zoning change, it was strictly to allow the drive-through in the zone, which was not allowed. I did not feel that that was predicated on door locations, but by the actual use of a drive-through, where we're limiting the circulation to be internal. And I believe, uh, when that was approved, um, it was actually broadened to allow drive-throughs in other zones, uh, that was amended, uh, during that zone change. So, um, again, you know, we feel that this is the best plan we have. Um, I understand that there is a 2020 vision and a master plan that calls for different vision of this center, um, right? We have an operating center that is not going to change, um, and the retail environment. So, um, I, I hear your comments, um, but I feel we did meet zoning and we do meet the intent uh, to bring activation to Store Street.
Okay, thank you, Byron. Uh, Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I note, and I'm having a hard time getting my head around, is I'm looking at the site plan, I'm looking at the landscape plan in the plans, and I'm looking at the plan you have on the screener now, and the three don't match. So I'm having a hard time, you know, similar to, uh, member Smithfire, trying to grasp what you're actually doing here, and what you're bringing forth to us, and how you're trying to meet with our regulations for landscaping. One shows landscaping in islands in the middle of the existing parking lot. Um, some of, they, they just don't match. And I'm kind of concerned that I don't know if I'd be comfortable kind of approving this tonight unless there's a little bit better understanding on my behalf and maybe some of the other members, that what you're actually showing us is what's gonna be built.
So I would say that the submitted plans from Nobis should rule them. Um, and, um, some of these images that we're showing from an architectural element and renderings are trying to give you the look and feel, um, and perspectives, but the, the actual site plans that were submitted on record um, should be what, what will be built.
So if I could, as a follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So you're showing here, as I look at it, I look at the ends of those existing aisles from the existing parking that are kind of the, whatever, the east face to that building. There's nothing there, but if you go to the site plan, those look like they're being shown as actual raised islands with landscaping in them. Uh, no, the actual, uh, site plan in that same set that you show there, I forget which number it is. See those raised aisles right there? You are showing raised islands in there that aren't shown on that landscape. And then I look-
If, if I could just interject, Jeff, you're absolutely right. There, there are some inconsistencies between the landscape plan and the site plan, just because of timing of, uh, of submittal and changes and changes in architecture. So we absolutely acknowledge that we need to, we need to match the landscape plan to the site plan. One, one of the other big changes that we made, uh, uh, since the last meeting was we, we removed parking in front. As you recall, there was head-in parking, uh, right in front of the plaza. That was removed because of, of, uh, safety concerns from the fire department. Um, so yeah, that, we, we still do need to do a little bit of work as far as matching, um, site plan to landscape plans.
Um, and the, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I have one other follow-up.
Yep.
The, the other thing I noticed is on sheet five of your plans, it's labeled the demo. You're removing a number of the handicap spaces in front of Market Basket. And it's interesting that some of the ones you're removing in the middle are the ones that are directly opposite the door and directly opposite kind of the, kind of crosswalk area that's there. And you're keeping the ones that are actually further away. So if you kind of think of an ADA perspective, they require you to be, you know, the parking spaces closest to the accessible entrance. But yet, you shifted them. You know, we had a development in here a few months ago where tenants weren't aware of what was going on, on the site. Is Market Basket aware that you're taking out all these handicap spaces in front of their building? And how do they feel about that with the use of their customers? Is it gonna have a negative impact on the people using it?
Um, they have been presented the plan, um, and we didn't get any negative comments, but we can follow up with them personally. Is, is this something that can be imperceptible?
Yeah, it, it, we can absolutely move the spaces closer to the access aisles and the front doorways for Market Basket. We're, ultimately, we're trying to achieve, uh, uh, the parking count we needed in the, in the parking lot. Um, so, and there was an overabundance of accessible spaces, so we re, we are proposing to re-stripe them, but we can move them around and get them closer to the entrance, particularly the Market Basket.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up to that. I believe one of ADR's comments was actually a use study of the existing handicap in front of Market Basket. I actually think that's a good idea, because if you've got, what, twelve existing spaces, or two, four, six, whatever it is, if you go during peak hours of the day and those are actually being used by people for accessible reasons, I would question, why would we want to take those out to gain a few non-accessible spaces that those people can park further up, closer to Store Street, where half the time that parking lot's empty? I would much rather see us, um, catering more to that uh, population in this area, if possible, even though I know you may be overall exceeding the minimum ADA requirement of the total number of spaces on site required.
So it's the same thing over in front of whatever the other bill, Burlington Coat Factory, I think it's the same setup. It looks like you're gonna be removing uh, three of the bays there as well. Okay, uh, Heather?
Hey, I just want to clarify, uh, for the board and for the applicants, that staff is, is not recommending approval of this project tonight. Um, because we have outstanding comments that need to be addressed. We have the planning consistencies. Um, you know, their last submission came in too late for us really to even review it. Um, you know, we thought there was no reason why we couldn't continue the public hearing and have these conversations about architecture and the, in the last revisions that, uh, that ADR looked at of the comments that they made. Well, we're recommending to continue until we get a complete plan set that, where everything matches and where the significant staff comments have been addressed. I think engineering may also have some outstanding issues as well. Um, normally, we would approve with conditions, but there's too many balls in the air and we have not had a chance to fully, uh, you know, vet everything. And, and again, as you said, we don't have consistent plans. So, um, just so the board is clear, uh, we, we did not recommend approval of this. We're, we're recommending to continue until we can get a, a, a full, complete, consistent plan set that we're able to review in time for next month's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Uh, Suzanne, I got your hand up, but I don't know if it was up-
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so there is not one tree in front of that, um, expanse of buildings along the road.
On the landscape plan?
On the landscape plan. And then, um, and then I don't know where in Concord we allow stone beds in lieu, in lieu of mulch. Maybe in Arizona, but I don't know any place in the city where we have a commercial development that we've approved stone as a mulch. So those are things, I just, I, I just think there has to be a little more thought that goes into some of the um, site improvements.
Well, let's, let's try to give staff a little bit of direction here on it then, if, if it is the intent, uh, and again, I, I just, I want to make sure we're moving forward and not sending the applicant back to do things they've already done one way and then turn around and done it the other. So if, if, you know, I, I, my intent originally on this plan was to have, uh, uh, something that looked a lot like Main Street with, you know, buildings close up to the street, every, you know, moving from one to one. And we, we move consistently from different ideas to different ideas to different ideas. So I, I want to be consistent in what we're telling the applicant, making sure that, that, you know, our message is clear, that this is what we want, as opposed to come back again and, and, you know, try it again. You know, so if, if, if if staff can weigh in, or you guys have thoughts on the, the streetscape as far as the, the points that Suzanne's brought up, I'd, I'd, now's the time to hear it. No?
Thank you for that, Chairman.
Okay, so, uh, i- if, let's, let's, uh, let's see if we can take any other questions. I don't know, uh, Heather, from a, a public hearing perspective, if anyone's here, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna-
I, I still, I mean, I, with, I, I appreciate the points that Suzanne is trying to make here, but we have, but you have not given the applicant a chance to respond to her comments.
And I told, I told them to look off on that, yeah.
She's making a legitimate point that the sidewalk should be separated with street, some type of either paver area, that's like a furniture area, or a landscape area. And, uh, you know, I, I can be very direct and say, yeah, there should be street trees there. We have street trees on Main Street. We have street trees on our commercial streetscape, and we have street trees on our, uh, local residential street. We have street trees requirement every, everywhere. So yes, there should be street trees along the frontage of Store Street. They were on the concept plan. I did not realize they were not on this plan or on the landscape plan. So there's, there's some definitive, you know, feedback we can give. Add, add a separation for the sidewalk, add in the street trees. And I would like to hear a response from them on, on Chris specifically, on the grading and whether or not they can modify, uh, you know, kind of like flip things around here, because it's a, it's a tech, it's a technical area.
Right, yeah. No, there is enough room to provide, say, a five-foot, um, island between the curb line and the sidewalk. We could, we could shift the sidewalk back five feet and provide a landscape area. I just didn't understand that that was what the city desired. I, I look across the street at the garage and it's, it's concrete all the way to the curb line. There are trees there, but they're in grates. So I just want some guidance from staff as to-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that we're insisting that it necessarily be landscaped, but I think when you're talking across the street, there is like a brick paver area, and that's where the trees are. They're in a urban, like, street furniture sort of area. Um, you know, you have a lot of landscaping in here, which if you put, if you put, if you created that kind of a thing and then put the sidewalk on the other side of it, if you still had additional space to do some of the features that you have in here, then I, I, I guess start with what Suzanne's saying. And I, and I apologize, we didn't give you this direction before, but, but I, she's making a very good point, that we just sort of didn't, didn't process in the big picture. So I would say just start with that urban furniture street patio area, add the sidewalk on the other side of it, and then see what you've got left to incorporate some of these ideas that you had previously.
Yeah, sure, we can do that. Understanding that it's only gonna happen along the, the frontage of the new stores. And maybe wrap around the corner.
I would say-
As you go further, as you go further to the south, you, we have parking for the plaza that it, it's very close to the right-of-way. It's not over the right-of-way line.
I would say, I would say from the drive-through to the, you know.
Around the corner.
Right.
Yep. Yep.
This is Frankie. This is Frankie and I've I've uh I can take some blame on this, Chris, uh cuz you didn't have your hand in this by yourself. Uh the only concern I have, and I I just raised this not to defend the design, but to ask for clarification, is when you look in front of the spec building. And understand that we have created patio, which was one of the comments that was uh discussed in numerous workshops or presentations and so forth and. You're correct, we have that that um handicap accessible ramp that goes down. You can see that we've sort of sandwiched that between landscaping. So if we take the landscaping. Out to the curb line and minimum of five feet, which I understand the the street trees and I obviously we can we can put trees. Uh anywhere in of those planting beds all across the front. My only concern was one of the comments I heard earlier this evening. Was and and there's no asphalt here, by the way, but I heard a comment of a lot of asphalt over here and what will in essence happen? Is is and I think you're hinting at it is that if we bring that right in front of a spec building, if we bring that landscaping to the curb, go five feet. Then there will not be enough area to put more landscaping between it and the handicap ramp. So. What we've attempted to do is a series of layers, right? There's the sidewalk, there's the landscaping, there's the ramp that goes down, there's some more landscaping that gets hidden in the. In the retaining wall and then the plaza and it as it tiers down three feet to the finish floor of the spec building. But if we flip-flop that, which is totally your call, Chris, Chris can make make it happen. There will be a wider expanse of pavers and sidewalk now that goes to the edge of the handicap ramp. Because we will not have enough depth there for more landscaping once you mirror that.
Okay.
So as long as as long as that's acceptable, because earlier this evening I heard there was, you know, all this asphalt and 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 too much paver and not enough green.
Well, if if I heard you correct the the urban environment that Heather moved to um. Of the of the brick and the and the landscape grates, you know, perhaps that's a a happy medium. That doesn't require us to push all of this five feet and uh you know, as a condition, you know, Chris, let's look at that, so.
Okay.
I I don't know. I would, I'm curious, Suzanne, do you have any response to that? Well, I I I didn't mean to say asphalt for the um the pedestrian ways, but the asphalt of the road. And the impact of having shade trees where there's parking is is important. And I and I think and I totally appreciate the patio area, but there's a very wide unused defined space. On the other side of the restaurant building that has. Um I don't even know what they are, just like little beds, but. There are places where shade trees that we can make the pedestrian experience um as pleasant. As it can be as you're walking down Store Street. You aren't necessarily lamenting, you aren't necessarily lamenting the loss of the landscape bed between the ADA accessible ramp and the sidewalk. Uh you're more concerned that they provide shade trees in the right location. Yes, and I think that there are areas that are probably oh um more the the pedestrian areas or the access areas. Might be oversized where you could have instead of shrubs, which really don't add much benefit other than visual. You know what I'm saying? Yeah. Okay, so I think that they just have to be look at it and what's the priority here? And I think the pedestrian experience walking down Store Street. Um happens a lot. And we could make it nicer in this one development.
Yeah, so I brought up the the rest of Store Street, um which obviously the shopping center will be greatly vastly improved. Um you know, this section of Store Street, you have sidewalk trees afterwards and it was only in the garage area where you had where you. Have these areas here, so.
So so and I don't mean to interrupt, but just because you don't want to copy what doesn't work well. You know, there were things that garage was built a while ago.
No, no, I agree.
And and I and I and I and you know, the the cross-section that we were looking at is maybe like. You know, in the last ten years. And sometimes things happen, sometimes they don't, but to not have anything. I just don't like it when you just say, well, look at how awful it is right now. Just let's make it as, let's make it equally as awful.
Well, I I that was not my suggestion. I was just trying to say that this is gonna be a drastic improvement and.
I I know.
We're trying to keep it the urban environment of of bringing people right away into the areas of these pocket parks. But again, we'll we'll look at, you know, entering some type of, it just, we're just gonna have a balance of of taking away from one to add to another, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Uh any member of the audience wish to address this application? If you could uh make yourself known to the host, just raise your hand.
Chairman, I think Mr. Uh uh Member Fox has been raising his hand a couple of times in the video. I think he wanted to speak.
Oh, okay, sure. David?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh I just, I really wanted to follow up because I think that um. I think Byron has hit a bit of a nerve on the uh on the Store Street, the the look of Store Street going forward. In 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 that, and this is more commentary than anything, but for the most part, Store Street. Uh you look at the sides or the backs of buildings and it is sort of the last best hope for that part. Uh this project to to maybe take a different, a different tact on that. And my question is, um the one-ten grill facade, west elevation. Uh what's that dimension? That would be my one ques- first question. And secondly, their reluctance to create an entryway. On uh that would face Store Street um on that side. And I I understand that the kitchen issue and and. Um you know, and the and the floor design, but um once again, it's it's a side of a building. And at least on the elevations that I'm looking at, it's a it's a fairly massive wall. Um with three windows in it. Uh I I agree that they're large windows, but. Massive wall, so you're looking at a side of a building, which unfortunately um is what Store Street is. And so I am, I'm just trying to follow up a little bit of the of Byron's thoughts. Going forward, if if um if an entranceway on Store Street um. Um is viable.
I think he just zoomed in and showed, I think it was sixty-eight feet is what I saw quick.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight feet with three windows. Now and now I will say the windows look a lot better than what we saw last month, so.
I agree with you. I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I really do. But I I really want to, I you know, I'm I'm uh I'm sympathetic to. To Byron's comments and I think that he's on on the right track in terms of of. You know, the 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 look of Store Street and and I don't want to see, I'm I'm, you know, there's, it's just, it's. Uh sides and backs of buildings are not attractive.
Ruben, do you mind if I uh chime in on this one?
Oh, please do.
Uh I'm sorry, guys, I I'm kind of new to the crowd here. I I work with Ruben. I I oversee our development on the with Brixmore on the East Coast. Uh my name's Ryan Duhien from record. Um I'm the SVP of Development. And I I was kind of with you guys on on this point. Uh Ruben brought me in and said, how can we help try to make this happen? And so. I uh I took a special interest in trying to advocate for this cause with our tenant. Um I, you've had numerous calls and, you know, this was really a compromised situation for him and. You know, he's made it really clear that it's a deal breaker. Um you know, if you recall previously, the patio was flipped the other way and it was sort of sandwiched between. The um the buildings. So we did convince him to flip it to the other side, to the north side. Um and to create that entrance through the patio into the bar, which is pretty close to the to the corner. But not the ideal situation that I I think you guys are talking about with it right on the corner. Um but we weren't able to convince him to flip it so that the um main entrance was on the corner. Uh as as you're as you're uh referring to, despite some pretty significant efforts. You know, on our part, because we did hear what everybody had to say in in terms of this point and, you know, our tenant has said. That 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 he's unwilling to commit to moving forward, continuing continuing with our our deal, which is basic. You know, like basically a deal killer for the for the overall uh project. Um uh and, you know, he made it clear despite our really. Firm and diligent efforts to persuade him otherwise, so. I just want to let, I want to let you know that we did, we did try and we did um extract some compromise in terms of flipping the patio to the north side. Uh and that does get us a door that's much closer to the to the intersection, so um. Hope you guys would just um consider that and as you're thinking about this.
Right, uh let me just jump in if I may and just say, well, thank you for your effort. Um and uh I I again, I'm still trying to get my head around his thinking. Could you shed any light on? You know, why is so objectionable and and is this?
It's not.
One-ten or is this like a franchisee that we're talking about?
He's the owner and it's a regional um chain. There's multiple of them in the New England area. Um and so he he's a pretty successful with the concept. He developed it himself. Uh he's very confident in his knowledge of his operations and and his vocal about letting us know that. We're the real estate experts and he's the restaurant expert. Uh so um so, you know, he. And and this is not uncommon is that is that many uh many of these sort of sorts of tenants. Uh want want to want to have easy accessibility to um to the parking. And that's that's, you know, they they, that's what their customer tells them. Uh and it's, it's, you know. For better or for worse, that is the reality with with many tenants. They want to have, you know, a main entrance facing onto the parking. So I was, you know, I thought that it was kind of a nice, at least somewhat of a nice compromise that we did get the patio entrance. That kind of leads into the bar, which is sort of cool. It's a really active part of the restaurant. If you look at the the fixture plan in the restaurant, which is on one of the site plans in your packet. Uh it's kind of a a very um energetic part of the uh, if you zoom in on there, you can see you enter right into the bar. So, you know, that elevation on that north side, which is on the entrance and you're gonna be able to see it coming down uh from the downtown is a really. You have the patio and the bar and the entrance there. That's a really, you know, energetic and 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 uh cool part of the. Part of the project and you'll be able to be able to enter the restaurant right there, be able to enter the bar right there if you're planning to eat. On the patio, if you're planning to eat at the bar, you'll be able to get there uh from that from that location there, which is really only about. Thirty or forty feet off of the corner, so.
Uh that that is a a really nice design and and again, I I appreciate all of your uh your efforts. I just. Again, um it boggles my mind that uh that he managed to be on the sidewalk in Manchester. But uh apparently in Concord and other locations, that's not a, that's not an option. And and I hope you understand that that my greatest concern is that we're setting a precedent here. And if you have a tenant come in for the middle building who says the same thing, you're gonna be back here in front of us saying the same thing that you're saying right now. Sorry, but this is, but but this guy doesn't want to have this nice patio in front of the building. He doesn't want to have a a a front door on Store Street. He wants to be facing the parking lot. And then we end up with this whole development, which was supposed to start bringing, you know, which was. Supposed to start bringing businesses onto the sidewalk of Store Street, which is just another big urban suburban type of of mall. But I really do appreciate you going to the math.
I do, I do think you'll have the option in 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 the one-ten grill, in the way that we've designed the spec space and the way that we've designed the coffee. Uh cafe to enter both from Store Street and from the parking. And realistically, I think we know that there's gonna be a mix of both. Um so um so it's really creating the optionality on both. We tried to get that main entrance on there on the one-ten grill. Got something that was better, but not quite, I you know, I know not quite ideal for for the four-year, so.
Well, again, thank you. I mean, maybe this just isn't the right location for its restaurant, but thank you very much.
And just, Ryan, just for the record, you're with Brixmore?
Brixmore, probably.
Okay, thank you.
Ruben and I worked together.
Okay. Okay, any other questions uh from the board or from the audience? Okay, let's go ahead and stop sharing, Heather, if we can, and we'll uh close the public hearing. And send everybody back if we can. Thank you all for your participation.
Can you give me a minute? I'm gonna put everybody back into attendees.
Yeah, and last chance on any attendees before we close public hearing, if anybody'd like to speak. Uh while Heather's pushing people back into the audience, just raise your hand.
Yeah, if I could, Chair, just uh just to summarize.
Yeah.
You know, we're 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 in May. Um I I heard Heather's comments, uh recommendation of staff um to push this to the June meeting. Um it is our goal to see if we can get a vote tonight and continue to work with staff, which I think we've done very well to date. Um make several of these items conditions of approval. Um if we miss, we're gonna be into June. Construction documents, July, we're gonna miss a whole year. Um we're gonna be getting into the fall/winter site work. Um when we really were are eager to start this project uh in two thousand twenty-one and October twenty-two, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Heather, can you uh put them back in on the audience side?
Yeah, I accidentally um. Sorry. Like the mime all over again.
So we'll, yeah. Click the button. So uh we will close the public hearing and uh thank you, Gary, for that mime impersonation. Um comments and questions and concerns, I think we've heard quite a few. Um again, I I. I don't know that we can appro- approve anything with uh you know, signed packages and lighting and. All the other things, Heather, that we're uh either looking for or waiting on. Uh can you give us kind of a summary on what you're waiting on for for the next steps?
Sure, well, um but I'll defer to Sam and and Gary. My understanding is that the. The last set of plans that we submitted were fairly recent and they haven't been fully reviewed. Um that there were some significant comments with regard to the site plan that haven't been addressed yet, that haven't been updated. Um and so I would, I'm I'm not sure that we feel comfortable recommending approval until we get, we go through it all. I mean. And and they're they're correct. I'm sympathetic because there've been so many issues that we've been juggling and dealing with in terms of design and. You know, um but it's a, there still are a lot of other issues as well. Uh so, um you know. Suzanne's comment about flipping the the sidewalk and the, you know, providing some buffer for the for the sidewalk is is also a pretty significant issue and. Um I'm kind of babbling. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna defer to Sam and Gary, but I I'm sympathetic to what they're saying. It's just, I I think it's a big project and there are a lot of balls in the air and. And I'm not sure we've got them buttoned up yet.
But I I just want to be clear on what we're telling them if we've in if in fact we.
They need to complete a full, a pl- a, they, they have the staff reports. I don't think we need to read the staff reports to them. They have the staff reports, they have our comments, they have the comments from this meeting. Um.
And they had those in plenty of time before this meeting?
Well, there, like I said, there was a lot of issues for them to deal with. I think they spent a lot of time and effort addressing the architectural stuff and and um. You know, then there was the whole issue of the parking in the wrong place, so um maybe it wasn't enough time for them to address everything.
Okay, Sam?
So we've had um the report that went to the board and the applicant back in uh April. Was not all that different from what went to them this month. Um the biggest change that we saw in the most recent submission was. The relocation of the head-in parking that was against the uh sidewalk where the fire lane is. Um that was an issue. Um we thought it was gonna be a bigger issue than it actually was, um but they were able to accommodate those thirty-some odd spaces uh within. And not have to seek variance. Um aside from that, there are, you know, a litany of issues um regarding. Especially the uh where they have that uh loading and drop-off area, um that is off of the entrance drive. Uh there's a crosswalk that goes through that. Um I think the point that Jeff brought up would be uh. Relocation of handicap spaces um for Market Basket is is something that definitely needs to be looked at, the consistency in plans. Um you know, I think that the the largest pieces being the architecture and um. The the relationship to Store Street has been the overall conversation here and I think that. the the relationship to Store Street has been the overall conversation here. And I think that we're getting really.
Uh-oh, Sam, you froze. You froze up, Sam. Hold on. Oh, boy.
Oh, Sam. Our extraneous pieces that need to be titled overall.
Sam, where your your video, your video was frozen and your audio was cutting out. So if you can turn off your video and just tell us again, I think we missed maybe the last thirty seconds or so, but I think you're getting close and then you kind of cut out.
Sure, I I think the the main idea with uh the building architecture, um, how they're situated on site, uh, the relationship to Store Street. I think we've we've talked about that extensively with ADR in this board and we're close on that, but the extraneous issues um with the the sidewalk, uh, the landscaping islands, the handicap spaces, um, those issues are not insignificant and they do need to be addressed. Uh, I have a feeling that, you know, we can work with with Chris and and Ruben and their team um quickly to address those. Um, but, you know, they are still not insignificant issues.
Okay, Gary?
Sure. So um, our our questions are primarily at this point related to a lot of the drainage on the site. Um, we have a few questions just on the catch basins, how things look over there. Where is this water all going? Um, and we also wanted to request a chance to take a look at the hydro cat files just to um. Anyway, yeah, a lot of drainage questions. Um, you know, some of the question, some of the other points uh Sam has already brought up related to parking layout, uh, site circulation, um, and and so on. Um. There are some questions we had on the bump outs, just traffic flow, the layout of the drive through, um, the the bypass lane or or partial bypass lane, I guess is what I would call that. And um, a couple other questions just about if uh, you know, um, a fire truck can actually circulate through the site and get through the buildings where we think it would would need to. So there's some things we'd like to see as far as turning movement plans and and so on that, um, you know, we would want to see before we could um you know, feel comfortable moving forward with this. But obviously, uh, that's our I guess that's the world that we live in.
I got you. Could you maybe shed some light on what exactly the the purpose of a partial a partial second lane is on that uh on that uh drive through other than a fistfight with people that get cut off from one one to the other?
Um, I I guess my question is that I believe that's supposed to be meeting the intent of a bypass lane. And I guess I I don't know if that really would be a net. Sam, I don't know if you have any other piece to add to that, but I I guess my question is, does that um really meet the intent of of a bypass lane that we would need for drive through?
Well, it's it's something that we've seen a couple of times recently, this recent drive through applications, specifically up a three ten Loudon Road where this um where you have a you don't have enough space to accommodate the required eleven stacking cars. Um, so you have this double stacked lane would then emerge. Um, I don't think that we've seen it built yet and we don't know how it functions. Um, in the site plan regulations aren't explicitly clear about emerge and how that functions. It's just about accommodating the spaces. Um, so we don't have something that we can point to and say, yep, no, that's fine. You've you've done it a way that works. We have proof. Um, our biggest concern is the accommodation spaces. Everyone knows how drastically the drive through lane at Starbucks some I remember backs up into the parking lot and jams up traffic circulation on that site. Um, so there there are able to accommodate the required spaces. Um, they do have, um, if I'll just I'll share really quickly. With this.
Just just for the record, Sam, not all of us know how how it Starbucks gets backed up. So.
It's significant.
Okay.
So you have, you know, these are your eleven required stacking spaces here. You have this paint right here. Um, this is a concrete island. I believe it's flush. I think that these be consistent. Um, but I suppose that you could, you know, call this a bypass lane. But then what happens when these two cars are stacking, waiting to merge? This guy needs to get out, but there's a car behind him. It then no longer functions as a bypass lane. So uh it's it's something that we we haven't really flushed out yet, um, but we're seeing it. So we need to really drill down and know exactly what we want to see.
So again, I I think this is a this is a, you know, this is a scenario where they designed what they're supposed to design to accommodate eleven uh eleven cars. Whether it works or not i- is is, you know, the second point in this. And again, I I want to be clear on if we do send them, you know, back, w- what we want and what we want to see and how we want to move forward. So you've given us some good comments, both of you. Thank you. Anything else uh from staff or from the board? Um, if not, I I again, I I don't think we have enough to move forward. Matt?
Um, so I just want to ask a question about was the we've listened to testimony um and had discussion on this for what? Four hours total? Um, three and a half, four hours from last month to this month? My question is, if we send this back, um, what more is the board going to do that staff can't do? Uh, and is it worth it to make them come back next month and then sort of have us rehear this? Um, because I just don't know what else we need to hear that we have to deal with, that the experts and staff can't deal with. I'd just like to know other people's thoughts on it.
Well, I have a comment.
Yes.
They can't break ground unless they know how the site's gonna look. And they're, you know, I I I it's not up to the staff to design this. All the stuff is already written down if someone took time to look at it. So I I kind of think that they ha- they have a lot. If they submitted three different plans, something is wrong.
So I I can actually answer that question really directly. Um, you know, we have not fully reviewed the plan and made our final comments. So we may come up and say, you know what? This doesn't work. You need to do this. And they may say, well, you know what? We don't want to do this. And then it comes back to the board and the board says, staff, why are you saying this? Applicant, why are you saying that? What's the answer? And then it's up to the board to make the decision whether staff is making a recommendation that's reasonable or because it it's when there's small issues, we don't mind working through it with the applicant. But when there's some major issues like drainage and circulation and, you know, the bigger the issues are, the less appropriate it is for us to be sort of duking it out with them. Because, you know, sometimes it's it's easy and then, okay, we can work it out. And other times, they're pretty big ticket items that um may not be as easy to to agree on.
Right, and I agree with you, Heather.
That's helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Why is why is it on our agenda then? I mean, I I.
Because it was, I think this was a valuable discussion uh to have about the architecture and the board's feelings about the project. I mean, um, some, I think in Concord, we're used to having a meeting and a motion and then, you know, but with bigger projects, the bigger the project is, the more issues there are to deal with. And, you know, in some communities, they end up coming back for however many months, you know, many more months than in Concord. So I think we're a little bit spoiled here in that staff does our best to have everything buttoned up in a few months' time really quickly. Um, but it's certain, it's it's, I mean, I I did not feel comfortable saying to them, no, we're not allowing you to have your public hearing continued. You know, I think it was completely their right to have their public hearing continued and come tonight and present where they're at with their application.
Okay. And again, I think our intent back on a charrette wasn't, you know, on on their ADR meeting, it was getting some public feedback as well. I mean, that was one thing that unless I mistook the the directions from last month was the 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 charrette aspect for me was a public a p- public aspect and more public feedback and public uh public information. Teresa, did I see your hand up? Go ahead.
Yep, you did. Um, I have a question. So if they come back in June, are we expecting we will have a decision and we'll make a decision? Or is this going to keep dragging out? I kind of agree with Matt a bit, but.
I think it's up to them. If they come back with with and they can address all the issues, discounting anything about where the location of a door is, I'm just talking about engineering and site plan development, you know? Uh, if they come back and they've addressed all the issues, I mean, there's another project, like interchange development, we're still talking with them. They still have not got their final plan signed off on and they got approved like six months ago. So it's not up to us, it's up to them. They need to answer the questions and and they need to design things appropriately in accordance with our regs. And if they do that, yes, the answer is yes. If they don't, the answer is no.
Okay. Matt? No?
Um, no, I I I appreciate Heather uh and, you know, and others, uh, your input. And I certainly don't want to put you in the position where you have to do unnecessary work. Um. We ha- I don't I don't know, maybe I we have had meetings, if we want to compromise, we have had meetings between months or um, I don't know if that's something that we would want to do. Um, not necessarily going to promote that idea, just throwing it out there uh that if they really are if they really are wanting to break ground on this and get started and they're that interested, can they do their work? Get it to, you know, get staff to try and sort of approve that and then have us be between now and next month.
Well, let's see. I mean, let's see where we go. Let's get staff, you know, again, I i- if we've if we are comfortable with the direction on where we want to go and we've got a litany of questions and everybody's happy with if we come back and staff says, okay, here's here's our report. Here's what we like. Here's what we don't like. Then we can make a decision and we'll see where we go from there. Okay, so again, I do, is there is there any uh appetite for making a motion to approve the plan that's been submitted? Or do we want to have a motion to, what's the best way to do it, Heather, if we want to continue or?
Yeah, we just make a motion to approve or a motion to continue.
Or a motion to continue. Anybody?
I'll move to continue.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, it tells me the tells me we've got a motion and a second. Uh, Consul Champlin made a motion to continue. Uh, Jeff Santa Cruz made a motion to second. I've got Teresa discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. What was the, were you, I I'm not sure I understood your response to Matt's question.
Who, me?
You, yeah, yeah.
Me?
Were you saying, were you saying, no, we cannot um consider?
I don't want to do a special meeting unless we have all of the all of the answers lined up and ready to go. If we're, you know, three, four, five days out and we can do that, we might entertain it. So we'll see where we go.
I think I think Matt's suggestion is tactical, that that we force their hand by having a a middle of the month meeting. Um, is that kind of where we're going?
No, not at all.
I can I can I can say the challenge from a statutory perspective is that the meeting requires ten days notice. So we literally would have had to get the submission today to address all the issues to give staff enough time to even review it. And that only gives staff a few days to review it before the statutory requirement to notice the meeting.
Perfect. So chances are pretty good it won't be a special meeting.
I mean, that's why we normally do one month, meeting a month.
Thank you, Heather.
I I guess, may I ask one more question? I guess I'd like to ask the applicant, do they think with what staff is saying about um, answering questions that need to be answered and responses, do they believe they can have it all done by June so we could move forward on this? Do they feel like they can come to resolution by June?
Can you bring them in, Heather? Yes, no?
I'm I'm sorry, I'm working on.
We got a freeze?
Are you opening the public hearing again, just for the record?
Yes. So go ahead, you guys.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we can definitely, I mean, we we have reviewed staff letters from from a couple of months ago and as well as the most recent. Um, they are a lot of technical that Gary uh mentioned. Reviewing to Chris, obviously, he's typical compliance and we'll meet with him and and review that. Um. I love Matt's idea. If we can get a special meeting, we'll 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 push our consultants uh to get everything coordinated, but uh, we'll be, we will be ready in June, no matter what.
We'll be ready for June and and, you know, I thank you for the feedback in today's meeting. I think if as long as we can stay consistent to the feedback that we talked about in the meeting today and what's in the staff letters and just quickly bounce uh the revisions back and forth.
That's that's my concern is I don't want to, you know, next month, oh, well, let's put, you know, solar panels on the roof. And I mean, I just what we've talked about and where we are is where we are and we make a decision based on that, not, you know, not more things that'll come up. So I I want it fully vetted. I want, you know, every dot, every every I dotted, every T crossed on on our end as well. So.
Uh, I have one more question. May I ask, um, do I do they feel that the board has been clear as to where the board's going? And so with this, so that next month, uh, they come back with the suggestions that have been made and we're not, we're not changing our minds or coming up with other things? I just want to make sure they're understanding where things are and we are too.
Yes, I think I think I, you know, I think so. The only thing that I see that it's a little bit of a debate between the the constituencies here is the topic of the sidewalk in front, and I can see it both ways. Uh, I, you know, I I tend to, in in my profession, I do a lot of these, but I tend to take advice from my design professionals a lot of times. Um, you know, they're good. They're usually pretty good. This team happens to be very good. So, you know, um, but that's the one piece that's a little ambiguous to me coming out of this. But um.
Well, I would agree with I would agree with that. I think that there is a little, uh, there's a still a question mark in my mind. I think you know, that Frankie's comments regarding if we change this, this is going to change this and this is going to change that is something that we we as just non-designers looking at it can't visually look at it and say, well, I don't like that or I do like this. I don't mind not having street trees right up against the 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 piece. Again, not going to see signage and things like that. So I'm I'm a little less I I'm a little squishy on the street trees. So maybe, you know, there's some ambiguity and I I don't want it to be when you guys walk away to.
I mean, I would offer that I would personally think that adding some street trees to the existing um uh planter beds that are currently designed in the site would help to soften up the soften the the streetscape up a little bit and uh without completely changing the layering that Frankie was talking about.
Right.
Keeping in mind that the sidewalk, you know, to the right and to the left is designed exactly the way we have it. So it connects perfectly versus just for a couple hundred feet pushing it in. I don't know that you're going to get exactly the desired effect.
But again, in an urban feel, you put too many street trees in and you're hiding the whole play, the whole front of the building and it makes it look like you're supposed to go around the other side. So I mean, it goes both ways. And I I again, I don't want to add to the confusion of it, but I I I I don't disagree. I think some street trees would look good, but I just don't want to see, you know, dotted street trees all along at, you know, thirty foot intervals or whatever it might be, just because that's what we're supposed to do. So.
Well, is that, may I just ask, is that where the board is and is the staff clear and the board clear? Because I think we need to be clear with these folks what we want for them to do so we can approve this next go around.
I just want to chime in for one second because I don't look at these um street trees as softening the landscape or the architecture. It really has to do with providing shade which mitigates the effects of the 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 um the paving, whether it's it's pedestrian pavers or asphalt. And we do have regulations that people have to follow in parking lots for that very reason. And I think that there's some of the design could be simplified to allow having street trees, which we've encouraged downtown and I'm sure that anyone who's downtown appreciates them. So it's, to me, it's not an extra.
No, I agree.
And so.
I I I think we're willing to do it too. And and so that's, it's just a matter of what's the appropriate number of trees and to try to make everybody happy because we're hearing um, a lot of tree, you know, more trees. Some people want more and some people want fewer. So.
Well, I I I get a little frustrated when I go to parking lots and the trees aren't there, but they have, you know, shrubs that do nothing to change the environment. So I'm just like, I think that it would be good to look at that in a different way because there's an all a lot of spaces that are not going to work. And I'm totally was really surprised to see that we're using stone as mulch with rhododendrons and stuff. So that's another thing. That's another dip story for another day.
We hear we hear the input and we're going to try to strike the right balance in working with the staff, but we hear that we need to add some street trees. I think that's.
Jeff?
Uh, I just have a question. Heather, I don't know if it's within our policy to be allowed, but if the applicant provides those plans to you, is it possible that the board gets them a little ahead of an agenda item the Friday before the meeting so that maybe this we as the board members can be a little better prepared in June to kind of have looked at it, asked questions of you, kind of to make sure the plans are going in the right direction? to kind of have looked at it, asked questions of you, kind of to make sure the plans are going in the right direction? So that in June, the applicant is ready to go and we've kind of vetted comments?
The plans themselves are public record, so as soon as we get them, they can be shared, whether we've reviewed them or not, whether we are okay with them or not. So the plans are public record and are available.
Let's do that then, let's, can we make a, for this one in particular? I mean, we, we all spend an inordinate amount of time looking at these from Friday to Wednesday. Um, I guess my wife sometimes gassed, but, um, you know what? If we get those and say, hey, here's the latest for this, here's the latest for that. I mean, realizing that we may not, you know, we might look at something and it turn around and be completely different, you know, the next time we see it, so. Is that what you're saying Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, it just, because it seems like we all have some significant questions, like Susan has and, you know, and we're talking about flipping the sidewalk. And if something shows up in that first, say, plan or the package they submit that a board member was specifically concerned with and they see it and say, wow, that's great, I like it, or could they tweak it a little bit? There's still time, maybe before that meeting, to at least have the applicant provide a response. So then, then it could be a condition of approval come June, rather than we're back here going round and round and round again.
Yeah, no, I don't want to do that.
So does that mean that the staff, as soon as they get it, they're gonna send it to us? Or are we gonna have to watch the website every day?
I'll send them out.
Okay, thank you very much, that would be great. And I think, I think Jeff's exactly right. If, if we, the sooner we get them, the more time if there's an issue can be addressed, so we can be efficient with this the next time.
Byron?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, an academic question. If we come back in June and if this committee felt that, that this project just was not the right project for this site, would it be within purview of this committee to debat, to deny the application?
Well, depends on what grounds. So I mean, that's the, that's the $24,000 question. It's just like the sign that was up on, uh, uh, Northway Bank, you know, you, you, your hands aren't tied for anything. But, um, if it's a plan that you don't like, you don't have to vote yes. If it's a plan you like, you can, you can vote yes, so.
Super, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Heather?
Oh, I would piggyback on that as well. Um, in my opinion, the, the main reason that if the board wanted to deny it would be architectural design review and inconsistency with, with the design expectation of the corridor and how the corridor should function. So that's something that, that's just, as a planner, that's what I would look to is for, as a basis for inconsistency. Um, but that's something we can have the city solicitor weigh in on if, if, if any member of the board wants to know what the application is to deny the application.
Let's see if we can get through the, uh, the comments, all the questions and concerns, revised sets of plans, uh, and then maybe have the solicitor's office weigh in. Yes, more Heather?
I just wanted to clarify on the trees, because there's this common like misconception that you want trees to be low so they don't block things. But, um, if you actually, and then people put in these little ornamental trees, which really are not effective. And when the ornamental tree gets grown up, it's exactly where you don't want it to be. So people end up hacking them down. What you want to plant is shade trees, you want to plant mature, large shade trees that are gonna grow up above your building, above your signage and provide shade. And if you provide the appropriate soil medium and, you know, in, in, in the implementation of your, of your planting, then those trees are gonna grow and they're gonna live. And you're not gonna have these weird looking things, like if you go into some of the parking lots around here, they're just these little lollipops. And there is absolutely no reason why we, we should be planting little, little lollipops and maintaining the little lollipops. So, um, you, you do want shade trees, you want big shade trees. And you want to limb them up, because in a few years, it's gonna be exactly what the pretty pictures show.
Okay.
I have a question, please. I just want to clarify, uh, the comment, or the question Byron asked. I mean, at this point, if we are thinking we don't like that, that design or what's being put down there, would not we have given them guidance on that way before now? I guess my, my, my concern is that these folks are spending lots of money, they've come before us, at least this is at least a second or third time. And, and at this point, if we are seriously thinking we may deny it, why are we asking them to go, go back and do more work?
Well, that's a good question, uh, you know, and again, I, I, I think we have had feedback all the way along the lines that, that there's been some concerns with architectural design reviews comments and the, the way they view the plan. Um, and, and the feedback that we've got just started last month. So we only heard this really for the first time last month. We heard a conceptual plan, uh, regarding the zoning changes that were proposed with a, a picture that looked completely different. Um, and, and then we've started to dig into it. Uh, last month was really the first full meeting that we had regarding it.
Okay, I just remember having a meeting a while back when this was a concept and, and numerous people on the board saying, this is, this, you know, we like it, this is exciting. And now I'm hearing, oh gosh, at least I heard it correctly, can we deny it? Um, so I was just asking for clarification, because I think it's really important to be clear, clear to the applicant as well as to the board members.
Right, and again, I think the, 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 the meeting that we had months and months ago was for the zoning change to allow for the drive-through in the, in the parking lot. And again, the, the concept drawing that we saw was a concept and it's, it's, that's where it's kind of diverged from there. So the concept looked, um, you know, quite a bit different than what we had seen in the first iterations of the design meetings. But your point's well taken too. I mean, if there's, if there's no tolerance for this project at the board level, then we should probably, you know, fit, pan that out. But I don't know if we're comfortable doing that until we've got the final designs and the final, the final plans in front of us that say, this is what it's gonna look like and here's why, and here's all the plantings, and here's all the street trees, and here's what the project's gonna look like. I'm not as, you know, concerned as I was with the, with the door on main, on, on the street. I think it looks much better than it did. I think the, the glazing adds to it. Um, you know, the side door is a good compromise, I guess. But a- again, I, I go back to the, the plans that, you know, way back originally, you know, the design was for three-story buildings. So we've done nothing but kind of change and change and change as we've, as we've continued on over the, over the time.
I don't think, I don't think we ever showed a three-story buildings or always.
No, 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 you didn't. No, I'm sorry, no, I didn't mean to apply that. That was part of the original 2020 and the design things that the city had done. David, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Understood, sorry.
I, I just, I just wanted to make a comment that I think that, I think that the applicant is on the right track. Me as one member, I, 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 I think that they, they're, they're headed in the right direction. And if they continue that way, I would support this project. You know, it's got its glitches, but I, I think it's a good project and, and I would, I would support them. I think they're doing a good job.
Okay, any other comments before we close it back down? No? Okay, again, thank you guys for participating from the, from the applicant's side. We'll, uh, push you back over as attendees. And, uh, so we've got, um, before us, again, I think the, 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 the continuance is the piece. If we've, uh, got a motion to continue, we'll take a motion to continue. If someone would like to make it?
You actually already have a motion.
Already been made and seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, who made it, just for the record, we have all that. Yeah, Byron and Jeff, okay, so we got a motion and a second. Uh, so all those in favor, by roll call for continuation?
Chairman Woodman?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Okay, so that, uh, the application is continued to next month. So Heather, does that, uh, no, nothing needs to be noticed or nothing has to happen, is that right? Okay.
Right.
Um.
Heather, I was also an aye, I believe you forgot to call me.
Oh, I apologize, Member Santa Cruz. Keep moving around, can't y'all just keep your sweaters in the spot?
And Mr. Chairman, did you close the public hearing on that?
And we didn't close the public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing on that. Okay, so, uh, that moves us on to other business. We've got before us to appoint a new member to Architectural Design Review. Heather, can you give us an update on that?
Oh, we just, we have the same applicant we had last month, uh, Tim Thompson.
Yep.
Uh, who's a, who's a planner in another municipality, but he actually lives in Concord. And he has applied several times to be on ADR and, um, we think he'd be a great addition, we would appoint him.
Okay, we looked at his resume, I, his resume was posted last month. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Tim Thomas, you said his name was?
Thompson.
Thompson for Architectural Design Review Committee?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by, uh, Matt Hicks, all those in favor, by roll call?
Chairman Woodman?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, welcome aboard, uh. And let's see, item 10 on our agenda, is any other business which legally comes before the board? Anything else Heather, Matt?
So could I just, I don't want to drag this out, but I was a little concerned with the sign, um, discussion with Empire.
Yep.
That, I, I, you know, it's really helpful to be clear what they are permitted to do and what we would rather see. Um, because I, I just, I really have a hard time denying and getting, making these applicants go, jump through all these hoops just because ADR or some of us would rather have it be something else. Uh, if they're allowed to do it, I don't know why we're beating them up so much. It just, it's really bothering me. Um, if we, if we want changes, then we need to make those changes in, I don't know the technical terms, but we need to make it in statute or code or whatever it is. And rather than trying to change that in these meetings and make the applicants sort of jump through these hoops. It, it's just really, it's really getting to me, basically.
And you see it more and more, Byron?
Yeah, I just want to second what, uh, what Matt said. Uh, I mean, um, I think I expressed myself pretty clearly. I think he was, that, that applicant was ill-served by his sign company.
Yeah.
On the other hand, you know, if he wants, if, if he wants to, if, if an applicant, I'm not gonna talk about that guy, but if an applicant wants to do something that to our mind is boneheaded business, then that is his right. I mean, you know, as long as, as it conforms to the standards, uh, establishes of the city. You know, if he wants to repeat the same words five times or 50 times, that's his business decision. You know, it's probably a bad business decision, but sometimes I think we slip over into trying to give business advice. And I, I, I see that, you know, with some of the, in this instance, saying, well, you don't want to put pools in service underneath where you already say pools and service. Well, I wouldn't do that probably, but if that person wants to do that.
Well, there are some, there are some, you know, there are some legal reasons in our regulations on what they can do. So, you know, Genesis Healthcare comes to mind on, on the signage that they use to advertising the name of the, uh, you know, the name of the, the business as opposed to the street address. Or, you know, when it's wayfaring signs and, and different, you know, different types of signs and different applications. But your, your point's taken Byron, as far as, you know, the whim of a, of an architectural design person that says that we don't like purple, we want green, or we don't want the color of this to be the color of that. Um, a- again, maybe some guidance as far as what we can do and as far as denying or approving the sign. When Architectural Design Review makes those recommendations, they're making them based on their experience and their good taste, which is why we've got them taking some of the, some of the heat off of us to do some of that stuff right out of the gate, so.
I mean, I think the recommendations are important, but I think it's important to sort out what's requirement.
Right.
I mean, I think the ADR probably serves, and there are a lot of people probably, you know, value their input, but I think in some cases, if it's not required.
Right.
I think, and, and that's a hard thing sometimes, because we see the recommendations and it almost becomes requirement versus it's something that's, that's, uh, it's just a suggestion based on, on their personal expertise, professional expertise.
So we need to do a little work, Matt, to, to your point. I think that's a point well taken and, and need to do a little work on what we see for a recommendation. So we'll see if we can come up with some ideas on how to handle that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking at you Sam, so I'll be talking to you about that.
All right, Sam.
Okay, anybody else, anything else? No? So, uh, we were glad, what's that, yeah, we were glad to take a recommendation by John Regan to close his very last. And I want to thank you, John, for your, your dedicated service over the years. You've done the city proud in a bunch of different capacities through either planning or the, uh, Heritage Commission, you were on for a long time, so.
Well, I'm still on the tree committee and, and lending a hand with the trail master plan.
So I'll still be around to kick around a little bit to use.
All right, well, we may, we may task you with being an alternate sooner or later. So you, we'll give you a little break maybe over the summer, but we might come back.
And I will say, it's been an honor, it was an honor to be appointed and it's been a pleasure to work with everybody and to learn from, from, uh, from all of you, both board members and the staff. And I wish you the best moving forward, because it's a, it's a valuable service that you do for the community.
Okay, well, thank you.
I, I move for adjournment.
Well done, well done. It'll be roundly seconded, John. So, uh, all those in favor of adjournment, just by hands if we could, adjourns. All right, so we are adjourned, thank you everybody, good night and.
Good night.
All right, good night.
Great way to be. Masterful.